Okay, good morning, everybody. Uh, welcome to the regular council meeting for Perth County Council Thursday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, start time is nine A M. Uh, call upon the council colleagues and staff for a moment of reflection, please. Thank you. Uh, I will read the county land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Anishnaabe. Who have a longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honor and respect the history, languages and culture of the diverse indigenous, Meti and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation and the continued stewardship of the land on which we live and work. Okay, uh, at this time, item four, disprove the community interest. Are there any colleagues that have uh interests that they need to declare at this time? Okay, see none, if the need should arise later during the meeting, please indicate uh to the chair. Uh, confirmation of the agenda. Uh, there is one addition. Item fourteen, one closed session. Uh, we will also be discussing a matter pertaining to identifiable individuals, uh, verbal updates, um. On the C A O. Um, just wanted to note that, uh, before we get started, that, uh, Warden Kellen sends his regrets, as does Counselor Orton. So, uh, C A O, C A O Lori Wolf sends her regrets and is not able to be with us today. And her step, Acting C A O will be Paramedic Chief Mike Bader. Welcome, Mike. And, uh, so item five, confirmation of the agenda as circulated and, uh. With that, additional, uh, item fourteen, one mover and seconded, please. Uh, moved by, uh, Counsel Raggett, seconded by Counsel McDermid, all those in favor. That's Carrie, thank you. Uh, okay, item six, consent agenda, we have. Twenty-one consent agenda items there for review and consideration, is there? Anyone that wishes to have one of those items pulled for further discussion? Don't see any. So with that, I will ask that, uh, council receives consent agenda items six point one to six point two one and approves. The May first twenty twenty-five council minutes. Moved by Counsel Wilhelm, seconded by Counsel Smith. All those in favor? Close defending, let's carry, thank you. Okay, um, item seven, there are no public meetings, public hearings or delegations. So we will move into section eight, staff reports. Uh, first is eight point one, um. C A O and under that eight point one point one health and safety policy updates. And, uh, Crystal Holmes, our H R generalist, will, uh, leave that discussion. Good morning, Crystal.
Thank you. Good morning Deputy Warden and members of County Council. The report before you outlines updates made to four health and safety policies. Maintaining a self, a safe and healthy work environment is not only a legal obligation of the National Health and Safety Act. It's a fundamental part of our commitment to safety and well-being for all of our staff. These policy updates were made to align with current legislation, increase clarity, accessibility, and contribute to overall effectiveness of our health and safety program. To continually grow and continue on our path of safety excellence, these updates are more than just compliance. They're about proactively identifying and managing risks, ensuring clarity and consistency in our procedures, and fostering a culture where safety is everyone's responsibility. We aim to make health and safety a living part of our workplace culture, and these policies are housekeeping in nature with no financial implications, and I welcome your questions.
Okay, thanks, Crystal. Um, any questions for Crystal on, uh, on the update report? Lots of details there, uh, as Crystal mentioned, lots of procedural things that needed to be dealt with. Okay, don't see any, uh, any questions from, uh, council, so, um. Uh, looking for a mover and a seconder, that the council receives the health and safety policy updates report. And that council approves the health and safety policy updates, moved by Counsel Kesenberg, seconded by Counsel McDermid. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question, all those in favor? Close defending? That's Carrie. Right, uh, moving on to eight point two, planning services, under eight point. Two point one, uh, we have before us an application for the Listowel Official Plan Amendment forty. Regarding the stop twenty-three auto sales limited application. And, uh, leading that discussion will be, uh, John Vice from Perth County Planning. Morning, John.
Good morning, thank you. So before you today is a Listowel Ward official plan amendment, uh, that's number forty. The location is at the red star on the slide there, it's nine twenty York Avenue North in Listowel. The owners are Stop Twenty-Three Auto Sales, uh, and the agent is Patterson Planning Consultants. So the project proposal, uh, the Listowel Ward Fish Plan Amendment, um. In addition to a few other applications that are needed. Are, uh, is proposed to facilitate the development of a four bay automobile sales and service establishment. And like, as you can see on the slide, this is the site plan. That's currently proposed. So the Listowel Ward Fisher Plan currently designates the property as residential, and you can see that on the left-hand side in the image above. Uh, the zoning on the property is currently future development, uh, dash seven, so that's just a special, uh, future development zone. This zone allows for overflow parking, uh, from the Stop Twenty-Three Business, which is across the road. The owners, uh, will also be required, uh, to obtain a zoning by law amendment application, uh, and a safe plan approval, uh, after the outcome. So just in consultation with the applicant and through the, uh. Policies of the provincial planning statement, um, section three point five specifically in the provincial planning statement outlines land use compatibility considerations. Uh, to ensure compatibility between the proposed automobile sales and service establishment and the residential uses, uh, that are surrounding, um, the site. The applicant submitted a noise study that was prepared by G H D Limited, and this was to analyze the noise potential, uh, generated by the, the four service base. Uh, this study concluded, uh, that the predicted noise levels would exceed the applicable sound level limits of the guideline. For two of the, um, residential. Uses nearby. Just wanted to put that up there, as you can see, the, the decibels that are required, uh, during the daytime are fifty. Um, predicted noise levels limits from the four service phase were sixty and fifty-six respectively for the two. Uh, residential receptors, uh, located to the south. Um, the study. Let's go on to the next page here, the study recommended mitigation by means of an acoustical barrier, uh, along the south edge of the property. Sound performance specification. And administrative controls implemented to comply with Ministry of Environment Guidelines. As you can see, uh, along the yellow, it's kind of hard to see, but there's a, along the southern property line. It's the yellow line indicates the, uh, proposed location of that, uh, mitigation, uh, thirty meter long sound barrier. So as such, the following recommendations, um, will be addressed through the site plan control approval, um. Before I get into that, sound of the mitigation measures, uh, as you can see on the slide there, uh, after. Implemented are proposed to, uh, ensure that the decibels are below the, uh, maximum requirements. So getting into the recommendations, uh, of the noise study, construction of a one point eight meter height in height. Uh, noise wall, uh, of thirty meters long. Service bay doors, uh, to be fitted with effective continuous weather stripping seals, uh, to mitigate sound leakage. And administrative controls and enforcement to ensure that the bay doors are closed during operations, uh, uh, except when vehicles are coming in. Uh, the study concludes that the proposed facility is feasible and will operate within the M E C B sound level limits. At the nearby sensitive land uses, provided that the mitigation measures recommended are implement. Uh, staff therefore consider the applications to be consistent, uh, uh, with the provisions of the, the P P S. The Listowel Ward Fish Plan outlines permitted uses within the highway commercial designation. Specifically, section seven point four, uh, includes an automobile service, uh, station as a permitted use. Uh, the proposed development will be municipally serviced through the reconstruction of York Street. The Listowel Ward Fish Plan requires that adequate landscaping and buffering shall be provided when new highway commercial type uses are located adjacent to sensitive residential uses. Uh, the noise barrier that's going to be constructed, uh, to comply with the noise study will act, uh, as adequate buffering between the two uses. The Listowel Ward Official Plan also directs that onsite drainage will be adequately controlled and must be established to the satisfaction of the municipality of North Perth. Um, the municipality's consultant and engineer, B M Ross, have indicated that stormwater management and lock reading and drainage. Uh, submissions will be a requirement of site plan approval. Staff are of the opinion that the Listowel Ward Official Plan Amendment conforms with the highway commercial designation in the Listowel Ward Official. Additional item to note would be, uh, Perth County's twenty twenty-four draft approved official plan designates this property, uh, as corridor commercial. Uh, this is a change from the current listable or designation of residential. Uh, the corridor commercial designation is very similar in its premise to the current Listowel Ward. Client designation of highway commercial, uh, to the name change, that, that's the difference there, um. The automobile sales and service establishment is supported in the corridor commercial designation. Um, minister timing is currently unknown, um, regarding the approval of the, of the draft approved. Uh, Perth County Official Plan. So this, uh, this application is being submitted to expedite development, uh, by the owners. The public notice was provided on April twenty-first, um, in accordance with requirements of the Planning Act. Uh, comments were received ahead of time by B M Ross, um, and the North Perth Manager of Operations. The M T O also provided comment indicating no M T O permits are required in this location. Uh, at the May twelfth, North Perth Council Meeting, no comments were received in support or against, uh, the Listowel Ward Official Plan Amendment. Uh, by members of the public and North Perth Council passed resolution to adopt by law Listowel Ward Fish Plan Amendment number forty. Uh, and to forward the, the application to County Council for approval. Here is the resolution that was passed. Um, I'm happy to take any, any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, John. Uh, colleagues, any questions for John on this, uh, application before us? Uh, Counsel Smith, go ahead, please.
Thanks, John, through you Deputy Warden, just a question, I have no problem with this, uh, application, question on the noise barrier. It's something maybe I missed in the, in the report, um, that would suggest maybe after it's built. Does someone come back and check those, the sound that it's actually working, or is there some, what triggers that, or would that happen in the future?
Through you, um, Deputy Warden. That will be a, uh, they'll need a, a building permit for the, the, uh. They'll need a site plan approval for the, uh, the proposal, so, uh, at time of site plan approval, uh, the building department, quarterbacks, um, all of those. Uh, items, so with regards to the recommended, um. Sound barrier, there's a specific density that they're going to need to, uh, comply with, and that will need to be, uh, established through, uh, the building department. Uh, during the cycle and approval stage.
Uh, Counsel Raggett, go ahead, please.
Through you Deputy Warden, um, what, what is the building behind round circle?
Through you, uh, Deputy Warden, that's the, uh, that's the M T O service yard.
Okay, so, so then the other question, the rest of this land, is it, is North Perth looking to make it residential or commercial, or? No one has that crystal ball yet to decide.
So through you, Warden, uh, the rest of the M T O service yard.
Well, the rest of the land that's all, uh, do they own all the rest of this land?
The M T O owns all that land.
Oh, okay.
Except for the residential uses abutting, uh, the southern property line.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, uh, see no more questions, um, we have a motion before us that. Council receives the application for Listowel Official Plan Amendment forty, Stop Twenty-Three Auto Sales Limited to report. And that council approves Listowel Official Plan Amendment forty, submitted by Patterson Planning Consultants, Inc. On behalf of Stop Twenty-Three Auto Sales Limited, where lands described as part, part lot ten. Plan one eight two, part one of forty-four R dash five five eight Listowel Ward in the municipality of North Perth. Moved by Counsel Kesenberg, seconded by Counsel Duncan. Any further, uh, questions, comments, debate on this submission? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Close defending, that's Carrie, unanimous. Thanks, John, and thanks to the planning department for their continued work. Okay, uh, item eight point three, uh, economic development and tourism, under eight point three point one. We have the May twenty twenty-five update for economic development and tourism. And joining us to present that are Justin Diaz, our Economic Development Officer, and Ricky Zhou, Tourism Officer. Morning, gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, good morning, thank you, so through the deputy warden, happy to be here to present the, uh, May, uh, development. For this update. Uh, for the most recent period, so just a few highlights within the report that I wanted to draw. Attention to, so, uh, the, the report highlights the, the activities of our development tourism division in regards to the priorities. Business expansion, expansion, people and workforce, destination development and destination marketing, so those items are listed within the report. A few items that I wanted to note, so, uh, we recently onboarded our, our summer students for this year, so thanks to the Kennesham Job Program. As well as, uh, M P John Nider and the role he plays in that process, uh, we welcome three new summer students to our team, so. Erin McGregor, Paige Thompson, and returning this year, Olivia Jackson. Those summer students are critical in helping us keep our tourism operators fully stocked with, uh, with supplies, couple of concentration. As well as other, uh, divisions, so really happy to have those, uh, three members join our team for the summer. Uh, the report also outlines, uh, some information on our prosper in Perth County, uh, business retention expansion program, so this program was supported by a, a red grant and allowed us to develop. Uh, business features, business videos, as well as a guide that. Supports our local businesses to understand, uh, our business expansion program and how they can leverage it, so. Uh, just a couple of things that are outlined in the report, uh, we've developed, uh, planted in Perth County business features, uh, profiles, we've done twenty-one of those so far. As well as a number of videos, and I just wanted to draw council attention to our Helminer Holstein's prosperity video, which continues to, uh, just blow up, uh, so we've had over three hundred eighty-five thousand views on that video to date. Across our YouTube and Facebook platforms, so, uh, really great opportunity to showcase local business doing something innovative and, uh, continues to exceed our expectations in terms of its reach, so. Uh, really pleased to see that continue to succeed. Uh, the report also highlights our tariff response survey, so. Uh, this is an ongoing survey that we opened up in February to allow businesses to, uh, let us know that the challenges are facing with regards to the current tariff environment. Uh, so there's some, uh, some of the high-level responses and what businesses are saying in the report. Uh, you know, information on grants and funding, uh, trade diversification and promotion. Uh, as well as network development, helping to build local networks to combat some of that, uh, you know, uh, export market, so. Uh, survey continues to be live, encourage businesses to fill it out confidentially. Uh, and if they do include their name and are asking to be contacted, we'll follow up with them to make sure that we're understanding, uh, the impacts of their business and industry. Uh, so I think that's it for the economic development, uh, updates, I'll turn over to Ricky to. Talk about a few exciting updates on tourism side.
Yeah, it's just a few things I'd like to mention, uh, and highlight for tourism. Our staff are, are excited to share with council new, the newly revamped twenty twenty-five Explorer Perth County Tourism brochure, which we have here for you. This brochure is designed to inspire visitors into exploring Perth County and the unforgettable experiences within our region. The official brochure is set to launch in coordination with, uh, local food, food week on June second, so it'll be launched on the first day of local food week. In addition, I'd like to mention that the global mail print and digital advertisements for Perth County Tourism is scheduled to be published tomorrow. All of which are, are scheduled to be in line with the summer tourism section. That's really it for me. If there's anything from Justin, we can take some questions.
Okay, thanks, Justin, thanks, Ricky, uh. Any questions for, uh? Staff, I'll start with, uh, Counsel Duncan and then Counsel Kesenberg.
Thank you, it's through the deputy warden, um. Justin, can you expand a little bit more on the twenty-five qualified investment leads generated from the twenty twenty-five trade shows?
Sure, yes, for those, uh, investment leads, so they're, uh. Before we attend a trade show, we, uh, have, uh, site selectors and, uh. Consultants who, uh, engage these companies to find out who are interested in coming to Canada, uh, you know, primarily to come to Ontario. Uh, so they ask a number of questions to make sure that they are, have serious interest, if not a. Uh, that it's a short-term plan, you know, within five to ten years or three to five years. Uh, so those, those qualified leads are those who've indicated that they have a plan to come to Canada or Ontario in the next three to five years, or. I believe three to five years is the time, and. Uh, and then those are the companies that we would meet with, uh, these trade shows, so some of them we've known with directly ourselves, others have been met with, uh, through our organization, Reparta, so. Uh, through Soma, through the Ontario Food Cluster, through the Ontario Main Backers Community Alliance, so, uh, that information is all shared within those, those, uh, organizations, so they allow us to. Uh, have access to these companies that are looking to come to Ontario and pitch, uh, Perth County as a hopeful landing spot for them.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Kesenberg, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, I was drawn, uh, thank you Deputy Warden, to the share worthy. Moments, uh, efforts, can you tell us a little bit more about, uh, of, on what the installation might look like for those?
Yes, we have a bunch, uh, through the word, that's what I agree with, I'm sorry, um, the, we have a bunch of projects that are, are in line with that share with the moments projects. That includes the ten photo frames that have, are outlining the, um, aligning the report. Uh, in that project, it would, it, um. It gives, uh, business members a photo-ready installation that, uh, visitors can come and take nice photos. In front of and to share, share on to our social media, share on to their websites for the county to use as a promotion, but also for the business to use for their internal promotions as well. Uh, and to, and as you should do that, we have used that project to revamp our brochure, um, as well as provide, uh, some, um, s- some, uh, individualized photo frames to, uh. Indulge your, individualize, individualized, um, businesses like Eva's Smokeoff Course and Muse Ice Shop in.
Okay, and anything else? Your own group? Um, no, thanks, uh, Justin and Ricky, um, for the, uh, report and the update, and thanks to. Our Economic Development Tourism Department for continually coming up with excellent ideas on. Promoting, um, not only local businesses in our county, but also, uh. Promoting, um, the county to prospective, uh, businesses that are looking to locate into this area, so. Thanks again, um, so the motion before us is that council receives economic development and tourism. May twenty twenty-five report for information. By Counsel McKenzie, segmented by Counsel McDermid. Comments, questions, if not, call a question, all those in favor? Close defending, that's Carrie, thank you. All right, uh, moving into eight point three point two, uh, P C Connect Rural Route Final Pilot Project Update Report, and Justin will provide that for us. Go ahead, Justin.
Uh, thank you, so through the deputy warden, this is just an information report for council, uh, correspond with our project closeout, so we've submitted all of our. Uh, final reports to the province, uh, on the, the, uh, deliverables on the. Rural program, so, uh, this report is just, uh, again, a, a information report to close that, close that loop. Uh, it does contain information on our final ridership numbers, funding information. Uh, as well as outlines the transfer of the administrative responsibilities that Perkins was responsible for to the city of Stratford, which is, uh, carrying on as a lead for that, uh. Uh, project, and then, uh. Finally, it just outlines how as part of our product management best practices, uh, we've got some documented lessons learned and have that, uh, ridership data that we've generated over the last number of years. I make that available to our community partners, other transportation providers, and those looking to fill transportation gaps, so making sure that the. Uh, the results are available and shared and continuing to, uh, make that. Uh, build on the lessons and the ridership data gained through that pilot project. So again, just an information report for council and, uh, welcome to, any questions?
Okay, thanks, Justin, colleagues, any questions or comments for Justin on this report? It's fairly straightforward. If none, then, uh, the motion before us is that council receives the P C Connect Rural Route Final Project. Final Pilot Project Update Report for Information. Moved by Counsel Wilhelm, seconded by Counsel Smith. Discussion? Seeing none, call a question, all those in favor? That's Carrie, thank you, thanks, Justin. All right, uh, next up is item eight point four, section eight point four Corporate Services. And item eight point four point one, we have the Corporate Services April twenty twenty-five update. And, uh, Marion McKean will, uh. Lead us in that discussion, go ahead, Marion, are you, you can, from there or from the, come up to the front, that's fine.
Thanks, so through the deputy warden, um, so this activity report, uh, details of various, uh, requests and projects that were completed by Corporate Services Division. If there are any questions on individual, uh, sections, I will bring them to the appropriate supervisor. I did want to acknowledge that Archives Awareness Week was April seventh to eleventh, and our, our case teams, uh, celebrated and marked the event with a series of social media posts, and, and they made an article. On how Archives helps to, uh, build communities, and so if you haven't checked it out, uh, please do so. Um, outside of that, there are some highlights, you will be seeing our team, uh, visiting York, uh, council with regards to accessibility updates from the twenty twenty-four annual report. There is any questions?
Okay, thanks, Marion. Uh, questions for Marion on that report? I don't see any. So, uh, the motion before us is that council receives the Corporate Services April twenty twenty-five. Update Report for Information. Moved by. Counsel Duncan, seconded by Counsel Raggett, all those in favor? Close defending, it's Carrie, thank you. And we'll continue with eight point four point two. Collaborative procurement for external legal services, and Marion, go ahead, please, on that report.
Okay, so through the deputy warden, so this, uh, report is, um, for external legal services, it's an informational report, and there are no financial implications. Basically, it's just to inform that the county has entered into a voluntary agreement to access a list of external legal services. The list has a variety of vetted legal firms, uh, that offer various specialties into different matters, and it provides, um, discounted municipal rates. So we are under no obligation to use any of these services, but it does provide us with greater flexibility should the need arise and we need to access these services.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Marion on this report? Don't see any, so, um, if there are no questions, we have a motion that. Reads as follows, that council receives the collaborative procurement opportunity, external legal services report for information. Moveover and seconder, please, Counsel Kesenberg, Counsel Wilhelm. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question, all those in favor? Close defending, that's Carrie. Good, thanks, Marion. Okay, moving on, we have eight point four point three. Twenty twenty five First Quarter Financial Variance Report. And joining us to present that is Daniel Hubbard, Senior Financial Analyst and Deputy Treasurer, along with Corey Bridges, our Financial Director. So good morning, gentlemen, and well.
Corey, thank you. I'm through the deputy warden. In front of you today is the twenty twenty five Quarter One Variance Report for the period ending March thirty first, twenty twenty five. As outlined, overall expenses across the county's divisions are approximately slightly below the twenty five percent budgeted amounts. Two things to note related to Public Works. Winter maintenance has accounted for eighty four percent of its budgeted total. Historically, the county incurred sixty percent of the winter maintenance budget in the first quarter and the remaining forty percent in the fall winter season. Therefore, winter maintenance is projected to be over budget by twenty four percent, which is equal to approximately one point one million dollars. This deficit will need to be funded through the capital reserves as the winter maintenance reserve has been depleted. The county will continue to increase budget totals related to winter maintenance to mitigate future deficits with surpluses to be allocated to the winter maintenance reserve. Secondly, the county continues to see higher than average drain assessment as public works than one of the the county did before. Lastly, majority of our projects are not typically completed until summer months, which explains the role of approximately eleven percent spent up to March thirty first. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Daniel. Colleagues, questions for staff on this report? Don't see anything. All right. So we have we have a motion before us here that council receives the twenty twenty five Q one Financial Variance Report for Information. Moved by councillor McDermott, seconded by councillor Wilhelm. Discussion. Councillor Kasonberg, glad, please.
It would be prudent to sort of ask the Treasury if there is some planning beginning regards to making or improving the state of our winter reserve and what that might look like or when council might see some plans from the Treasury.
Staff, go ahead. Through you, deputy warden, to councillor Kasonberg's question. With the winter maintenance, we try to use a five year rolling average to to develop that cost associated with winter maintenance. So as as we proceed into probably the twenty six budgeting, that you'll see that winter maintenance will be a significant pressure on our twenty six budget as it has been in their twenty five budget, to be in that situation over the next hopefully couple of years where we have a not a year like twenty five years ago or sorry, forty years ago, winter that we have seen that we into a wilder winter where that surplus then can be associated with that reserve. The further to is a policy in relation to that, what that reserve might need to be for the purpose of helping smooth impacts related to winter maintenance.
Oh, a question?
So will we see something in the current year that will see one ended that starts to frame what the reasonable state of the winter maintenance reserve should be? And how we move to bring that back to a more wholesome state?
Through you, deputy warden, to councillor Kasonberg's question. That is in the summer months into the fall, that policy work will will be identified, not just on the winter maintenance reserve, but all reserves of County of Perth.
Any other questions? I just had maybe one question. Could you remind us, Corey, and maybe might have to ask Bill, the pricing for things like road salt and sand, has that been fixed already for twenty twenty six? Or is that still a variable that we have to look at?
Through you, deputy warden. I believe that is, but I'll turn that over to Director of Public Works, Bill Wilson.
Yeah, through yourself, deputy warden. The tender for the supply of salt needs to be reissued as well as the tender for the haul of material. Staff are in conversations with both current vendors of those contracts currently.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. The motion that we have before us is that council receives the twenty twenty five Q one Financial Variance Report for Information. Maybe I asked that already, did I? I did, okay, sorry. That's been moved in second, okay. So if there's no further discussion, then I'll call the question. All those in favor? Close defending. That's carried. Thanks, Corey. Thank you, Daniel. Okay, item eight point five Public Works, and under that, eight point five point nine, we have some tender results from Perth Road one thirty and Bill Wilson, our Director of Public Works, will present us with that information. Morning, Bill.
Thank you, deputy warden, to councillor Ski. Through you, good morning, council. This item from Public Works reports on the tender results for construction tender twenty twenty five dash zero three one dash zero one for the rehabilitation of Perth Road one thirty from Perth Line twenty to the rail crossing just south of Stevenville. So included in the twenty twenty five capital budget is a capital project RS zero zero one six for the rehabilitation of approximately seven kilometers of Perth Road one thirty. The scope of the project includes recycling and repaving through the rural road section, drainage improvements within the built up limits of the village of Abington, two color replacements and improvements to the rail crossing at the north limits of the project. In addition to the county's capital project, both Perth East and Perth South have similarly scoped capital construction project on roads abutting the county's project. So working with both municipalities, staff have included the work of Perth East and Perth South under this tender as separate parts specific to their projects as a mechanism to better control and coordinate construction in the field and to increase tender quantities in hopes of more favorable unit pricing. So construction tender documents prepared internally and issued through the county's online bidding system, there was a total of sixteen plan takers, which yielded seven final tender submissions. The results of the tender submissions are tabled within the reports under table one. GIP Paving Inc. had the low tender submission. A breakdown of their submission is provided within the report under table two, as well as table three, which displays the breakdown as it relates to the county's capital work. As summarized in the report, the low bid submission received from GIP paving as it relates to the county's capital work is one million nine hundred forty four thousand three hundred four dollars and is approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars under the construction estimate for this project. Further, it is important to note that the contract includes indexing provisions for asphalt cement and is also subject to unit rate pricing. These factors will impact the actual project costs as it depends on AC market during construction and actual quantity of work completed. The overall budget for the county's capital project RS zero zero one six has a overall budget of two point four four five million. And councils of both Perth East and Perth South have had the opportunity to review the tender results pertaining to their capital work. And each council has expressed support in the county awarding the bid to GIP. Construction schedule has not been provided. However, it is anticipated that this work could begin as early as later this month into early June, following execution of an agreement. Traffic flow for the duration of the project will be maintained with exception for two short duration closures on one thirty to accommodate the the improvements to the track crossing as well as a color replacement. These tender submission has been reviewed by staff and engineering consultant, and it is recommended that the tender be awarded to GIP paving in the amount of two point eight eight four million as tendered. Quality control for this project will be similar to the county's practice in the past, will be done internally through experienced staff as well as through retaining consulting engineering consultings for particular components of the project. That concludes the summary of the report, and I would be happy to address any questions.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Colleagues, any questions for Bill on this report? Go ahead, councillor Kasonberg.
I'm just doing some quick math, and I want to confirm numbers. I think your report suggests that there are seven kilometers roughly that are to be paved here.
Yeah, through the warden, there's seven, roughly seven kilometers of county road to be paved under the county's part of the contract. In total, with Perth East portion and Perth South portion, Perth East has an additional two kilometers. Perth South, an additional just shy of six kilometers of of work.
Okay, because I was looking at the like the per kilometer cost. But I was using the select seven kilometer numbers less, maybe look at this. Can you comment on the roughly the per kilometer cost?
Through the warden, the per kilometer cost, without calculating it, I can say is less than what we would have experienced in twenty twenty fives or twenty twenty fours projects. Through this tender, through the results of of this tender and the other ones that closed. I can say the the price for hot mix asphalt is down from where it was last year. And we're also seeing a reduction in price for some of the recycling work. I I believe that's due to market condition and the amount of work that's up there.
Okay, thank you. Any further, councillor Wilhelm?
Thank you. Through you, deputy warden. I got some more comment. Last year, Perth South had GIP do some work, and the quality was very disappointing. And I'd like to just ensure that Perth County will receive a ton that we're expecting of good quality.
Yeah, through the, through more to the comments. Yes. Our staff has been in a conversation with with Perth South and are aware of some of the challenges over contracts previous. I can say that GIP did work for the county last year, Perth Line eighty six. That project was executed with with little with little issue. As far as quality control and quality assurance, as mentioned, we will have full time supervision on this project. And extending that project supervision to the to the local township work as well.
I'll offer the follow up. So so forgive my ignorance, but I'm interested in whether or how an acceptance process happens at the end of a contract. So do county staff or engineers or some agent of the county go out and look visually at this roads, say, okay, this is to the standard. We we believe that this is acceptable.
Through the warden, we we follow that process throughout the contract through issuance of payment certificates. And then the final ten percent holdback payment certificate, there's inspections that are done prior to that. External quality assurance control that's done is obviously sampling in the field. We also will conduct profiling of the road pre and post construction to give us a basis for the quality of the work.
Anything further? Okay. Then we have a motion before us that reads that council receives the tender results for Perth Road one thirty report and that council award tender twenty twenty five zero thirty one dash zero one to GIP paving. And that council authorized the warden and clerk to execute the agreement between the Corporation of the County of Perth and GIP Paving Inc. Councillor McKenzie, seconded by councillor Duncan. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Close defending. It's carried. Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, section nine, council reports, nine point one, we have in our agenda, the warden's activity report for April twenty twenty five. Again, our warden is quite busy with county business, both in the county and outside the county. It's worthy of noting that the warden Kilim is away on a visit to Japan, conducting county business. Starting with economic development tourism and other related matters. So we wish both him and Meredith Forjay, our Director for Economic Development Tourism, we wish them well on their trip and successful meetings and safe returns. So any questions on this report? Seeing none. Read out the motion as follows, that county receives a warden's activity report, April twenty twenty five report for information. Moved by councillor Smith, seconded by councillor Wilhelm. Discussion. All those in favor? Close defending. That's carried. Thank you. Okay, moving into section ten. Bylaws. We just have the one bylaw before us. And that's bylaw four zero three one twenty twenty five signing authorization for tender twenty twenty five dash zero thirty one dash zero one GI GIP. Motion reads as follows, that bylaw forty thirty one dash twenty twenty five be read at first, second and third time, and finally passed this fifteenth day of May, twenty twenty five. Moved by councillor McDermott, seconded by councillor Wilhelm. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Close defending. That's carried. Thank you. Parace. Item eleven, any notices of motions from council? See any? Any other business? The business announcements regarding the county county events. Okay, seeing none. Then we move to section fourteen. Close session meeting and reporting out. So I would ask for a motion that Perth County Council moved into closed session at approximately nine forty eight AM in accordance with section two thirty nine of the Municipal Act. SO two thousand one, C twenty five, as amended to consider a matter pertaining to litigation negotiations, CAO, and a matter pertaining to identifiable individuals for a full update also from the CAO's desk. Moved by councillor McDermott. Seconded by councillor Wilhelm. Any discussion? All those in favor? Close defending. Carried. We will now be entering into the closed session. County councils concluded the closed session meeting, and we're back in the regular session at ten twenty four. But we are at there was nothing to report out from the closed session. So we will move to section fifteen, the confirmatory bylaw. Four zero three two dash twenty twenty five, and reads as follows, that bylaw four zero three two dash twenty twenty five being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the Corporation of the County of Perth at its regular meeting till May fifteenth. Twenty twenty five is read at first, second, third time, and finally passed May fifteenth, twenty twenty five. By councillor Duncan, seconded by councillor Wilhelm. Any discussion? Not. All those in favor? Close defending. That's carried. And finally, motion to adjourn. That the county council meeting be adjourned at approximately ten twenty five AM. By councillor Casebergh, seconded by councillor McKenzie. All those in favor? And adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your day.